Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of June 14th, 2016. I'd like to thank the Garden Club, I can't see if you can see that, for the flowers they always provide, thank you very much. Rule call please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Here.
And Councilmember Kenneber is excused with notice. Carol, lead us in the pledge.
Be delighted. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any announcements this evening, but we do have a presentation, and that is the introduction and recognition of the San Bruno Police Explorers. San Bruno Police Explorers, post 559, offers an opportunity for young people between the ages of 14 and 21 to become involved in a rewarding and productive public safety and community service activity. Being an explorer helps prepare young adults for future roles as good citizens and contributing community members. Among the objectives of the San Bruno Explorer Program is to prepare young people interested in law enforcement or other careers in attaining their future career goals. We are very proud of our explorers and grateful for their commitment and dedication to our city. Officer Scott Rogie is here to provide additional information regarding this program and introduce its members. Scott?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. My current position, my current position is a School Resource Officer for the City of San Bruno. When I was given the task of the SRO position, I was bestowed the task of being in charge of our explorers. And when I was told that, I was, I was actually excited. I was thinking, hey, how, first of all, how cool it is to enjoy your job and to be able to work with these, these fine ladies, fine young men and young women. Again, it's, it's kind of selfish because it's something I really enjoy to do. Being able to be there to explain to them not only what we do in the police department, but why we do it. Suffice it to say what people hear sometimes around town, or online, or in movies, or in, in television shows, but to see actually how they react when we explain something. Maybe it's talking about Miranda, when we read constitutional rights, or perhaps when we're teaching them about how to direct traffic safely and effectively. It's, it's been, it's been a great experience. I've only been doing it now for the past six or seven months with my cohort here, Colin Page. We have several other associates that help us, but he and I are here tonight to introduce our explorers. What I'd, if I may for a second, I'd like to kind of explain what it takes to be a San Bruno Police Explorer. So first off, and these individuals have all done it, they turned in an application. That was the first part. Then after we obtained several applications, we had an oral interview, and we had it with Lieutenant Frye, we had it with Colin Page, we had it with Nicole Ruggero, and myself. After that, we, the three of them that are here, we successfully passed them, and what happened at that point was, we put them through a background. And what entails is a background, any, any person who walks inside our police department who works either as a volunteer or as a paid employee has to go through a background process. So after successfully completing that, what they had done, they were only half done. Then they had to go to a, basically, an Explorer Academy, and that's done at CSM and a couple different agencies, or parts throughout the city. So at that, the academy, what they do there is, for eight Sundays, we put them through an 11-hour day, and the first two hours is PT. So they get to run, they do the jumping jacks, they do sit-ups, we teach them how to scale fences, walls, all the things that we did when we were at the police academy, that's what we're teaching them. And if the eight, eight Sundays weren't enough for them on, on one Saturday, we put them through a 15-hour day, and that's over at Hutter Park in Ridgewood City. And that's where they worked with the Sheriff's Office with search and rescue, and they learned how to search around and look, look for people. And part of the, probably the most exciting thing, at least I heard from our explorers, is that they learned to rappel. So they get to rappel off these, kind of, these little cliffs and these, these big rocks. And one, one, one exercise what they do is they, they rappel down, they actually look for, look for a subject, they go ahead and tend to their, their medical, medical emergency that they've had, and then they, they wrap them up and they rappel them back up, upside the, the rocks. So that's one of the, one of the most exciting things that they do. Obviously, we can't do all this without your support, so we appreciate that. We appreciate the support of our chief, Ed Barberini, and a lot of the community, the people that have helped us through the community, is the Stamet Family Foundation, San Bruno Rotary has helped us in the past. And Cappuccino, Cappuccino is where we have learned and gotten a lot of recruitment from there. And two, two people in particular, Josie McHale and Joyce Lynn, who are in the Career Center, they've, they've helped us. Josie, mostly you guys know Josie, she's just got this desire to help any, anyone she can, and she helped us by self-encall and getting us into the school, before school, during lunch, after school, selling, selling our program, explaining exactly what, what we liked, or what it's all about. And we have three of them here today that just recently went through that process. When I was thinking of a couple extra things to say tonight, I just wanted to show how valuable they are, is that since April 30th, when we had Dios de los Niños, the Day of the Child, up to this week, these six, seven individuals, we, we have eight, eight altogether, two of them are at work tonight, but they have put in, from the 30th to today, they put in 169.5 hours of volunteer time. So that's, 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 that's something that, that's assisted our program tremendously. They were at the Day of the Child, they were at Police Day at the mall, and as well as the Posy Parade, and the Community Day in the Park. Without their assistance, it would be really difficult to, to deal with. So I'm going to have Colin up, come on up here, and he's going to introduce them individually. Hello, how are you doing? My name is Colin Page, I'm one of the Police Explorers with Officer Rogie, I'm going to introduce our explorers. First, I'm going to have Nicole Ruggero come up, she's our Police Explorer Sergeant. Next, I'm going to have Robert Chapman, come on up, Robert. Next, I have Raju Singh. And I'm blanking on your first name right now. Cheyenne, I'm sorry, Cheyenne Singh, come on down. Cheyenne's one of our new ones, so. Those are our San Bruno Police Explorers.
Well, thank you very much, this is an exciting program, been going on for a number of years, I think I threw a lot of candy at these guys at the Posy Parade, if I'm not mistaken, so congratulations on your efforts and what you're going to attain in the next number of years. We really appreciate your service, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Next item is item number five, review of the agenda. Can't see any changes or anything. Approval of a minutes of the special closed session of May 24, 2016, and the regular council meeting of May 24, 2016. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none of the approved or submitted. The consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Anything on consent? Through the chair. Marty?
I'd like to pull seven E.
Seven E is an echo?
Echo.
Okay. Anything else? Any action on the remainder?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Through the chair, before we go on to item E, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, for the record, that on the warrant register, I had this item of the Myers-Nave Professional Law, the three invoices been pulled and done separately. I would be voting no, but I do not have a problem with the warrant registered in its entirety. For the record, I am not in favor nor supporting or approving those.
Okay. Marty?
Seven E.
Let me read it first.
Go for it.
Accept a resignation from traffic safety and parking committee member and citizens' crime prevention committee member, declare a vacancy, and direct the city clerk to initiate the process for appointment of a new member. Right?
So I just wanted to remind the, the applicants, and for anybody that is interested in, in being on the traffic safety parking committee, and also for the citizen crime prevention committee, that if you already applied, that you don't need to apply again, and there will be another round of interviews if you so wish to attend at the interview. Is that right, Carol? Correct. So I encourage everybody that is interested to go ahead and apply, and for those that have already applied, it's not going to hurt to show up again and to express your intent to be on the committee.
Good, thank you. Action on seven E?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, there aren't any public hearings this evening. Item number nine is public comment, item not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation or in action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Could anyone like to address the council? Just tell us your name and your street, please.
Hello, Ryan Mersney from Keynes Avenue. These questions are for the city council, not the city manager nor the city attorney. I wish the city council to answer, since you're the ones that voted for our land to be sold to OTO Development. My questions are in regards to the petition to overturn the council's decision to sell the property to OTO Development. First, is the city council aware that the 3,250 signatures from registered San Bruno voters are more than any city council member has received in any contested election in the history of San Bruno? With the exception of Vice Mayor Medina, who ran on the platform to get a better deal for our land and voted against the sale terms of, to OTO. Second, if the council believes this deal is so good for San Bruno, why is the council unwilling to let the voters ratify or overturn your decision? Third, was the decision authorized with a vote, or did the city attorney act arbitrarily to deny the residents a vote? Fourth, did the council discuss the fact the lawsuit being brought will cost far more than the, in legal bills for the residents to pay off than would be allowing a vote to occur in November? How much are those legal costs going to be? And is that being discussed openly? Not the lawsuit itself, but the cost of the lawsuit. Fourth, will, or fifth, will the city council publicize the court date of July 28th, 2016 on the city's website? If not, why not? And lastly, did the city council take into account the sale of the Long Derelict Building at the corner of San Bruno Avenue and Huntington Avenue in January 2016? This is a full two months before you agreed to sell our property to OTO Development. That abandoned bank building was sold for over $3 million, which is $195 a square foot. This is more than three times the sale price of the crossing property. To me, it's a significant amount that should have been discussed. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll get right into item 10, contact for business. First item is 10A, receive a report and direct staff to cancel a regular city council meeting during the month of August 2016.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in every year, the city council considers roughly at this time of year, the possibility of canceling a meeting in August in order to allow for city council vacations and in order to address the fact that the summertime is generally a time of a slower amount of business. Staff is prepared to manage the workload in a manner that does not, would not be affected by a cancellation of a council meeting. We're presenting this item to you again for your consideration to cancel the first meeting in August, or at your preference, another meeting sometime this summer. Thank you.
I'm fine with the cancellation.
Okay, first meeting in August. Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the application to the City and County Association of Government, CCAG, to prepare a comprehensive parking management plan for downtown San Bruno.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, the purpose of this item is to recommend that the city apply for a grant through CCAG's Priority Development Area Parking Policy Technical Assistance Program to develop a comprehensive parking management plan for San Bruno's downtown area. Community development had included a project in this year's budget to fund the preparation of a downtown parking management plan, which was identified as a priority to address current and future parking needs in the downtown. In the meantime, staff has identified a grant program through CCAG that matches the city's objectives for a parking management plan. As a result, that project has been removed from this coming year's budget. The grant program, the CCAG grant program, provides technical support to develop parking management strategies that support the local vision for growth and development in priority development areas. And as you probably know, priority development areas are places identified by communities in the Bay Area as areas for investment, new homes, and job growth. And they are the foundation for sustainable regional growth in the Bay Area and part of the Plan Bay Area. The Transit Corridors Plan is located in the city's Transit Corridors Priority Development Area. CCAG has approximately $242,000 available in the parking policy program, which is what I'm going to call it from now on. The proposed grant application requests $110,000 in assistance. A grant for a similar park, parking study was granted, was awarded to South San Francisco last year, and staff's research indicates the cost of the proposed scope of work would not exceed $110,000. The city is in a great position to be successful because at this time, we would be the only active applicant, although CCAG has indicated that at least one other agency is interested in applying for funding. The Transit Corridors Plan established a comprehensive vision for the Transit Corridors Area. The vision is for an economically vital downtown, which is an exciting destination for workers, residents, and visitors. The vision includes intensifying commercial, commercial and residential uses to attract and sustain activities throughout the day and night, as well as plazas and streetscape improvements to create a welcoming, pedestrian-oriented environment. The plan outlines improvements to create, excuse me, the plan outlines the redevelopment potential for land uses in the Transit Corridors Area, and provides standards and guidelines that promote new mixed-use development and ensures high-quality architecture. To support these changes, parking improvements are essential to utilize the city's parking supply to its fullest extent. A key Transit Corridors Plan implementation strategy is to thoughtfully study and plan for future parking needs and to mitigate parking impacts from potential future development in the downtown. The Transit Corridors Plan recommends developing a parking management plan that includes an approach and timing for implementation of new parking strategies, and, as well as potential additional parking capacity, including funding construction of a centralized parking facility. Now, the study area for the, the proposed parking management plan is, would be the downtown basically covering San Mateo Avenue from El Camino up to probably Walnut, so crossing over San Bruno Avenue. It would include Mastick Avenue, Huntington Avenue, and several blocks into adjacent residential neighborhoods. It would look at public and private, private parking lots, as well as on-street parking in those areas. The first task would be to gather data on current parking conditions, including parking inventory, occupancy, and turnover to establish a baseline. This would be followed by an evaluation of future parking needs based on the Transit Corridors Plan growth projections. The plan will outline parking management programs and strategies to accommodate future parking needs, and some of those strategies will include that the, the plan will, will evaluate a shared parking program, time restrictions, enforcement and wayfinding signage, metered parking and parking pricing, in lieu, an in lieu parking fee program, a residential permit parking program, and also a TDM program. TDM programs are designed to reduce vehicle travel and promote the use of transit. Examples include transit pass subsidies, car share programs, pedestrian and bicycle amenities and subsidies, and unbundled parking. The plan would also evaluate the amount of development that would trigger the need for new parking supply, including a potential downtown parking structure. It would evaluate the feasibility, preliminary design, and potential, potential sites for such a structure. It would also recommend financing strategies for parking management programs, including potential on and off-street pricing. It would also analyze the need and effectiveness of parking in lieu fees as a, as a financing tool. Parking in lieu fees would be levied potentially on new development in the Transit Corridors Area. Finally, the plan would define a monitoring and implementation plan to establish the approach, timing, and priorities for the recommended strategies. The plan would include public outreach, and this, this outreach would include stakeholder meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and the, the Traffic and Parking Safety Committee. These would be held early in the process to receive that input from those, those bodies. There would also be at least two community, community outreach meetings, as well as meeting with the city council to present the findings and receive your recommendations on, on the plan and the, the, the findings to that, at that time. Finally, the, the city is continuously seeking grant funding opportunities to help reduce project costs and impacts on the operating and CIP budgets. If the city applica, if this, this city application is successful and CCAG awards a grant for $110,000, staff has determined this would be sufficient to complete a downtown parking management plan. There are no matching funds required for this, this grant, and, and a resolution of city council support for the parking policy program application is attached to your staff report. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Couldn't come any sooner. That's great. Couldn't come any sooner, that's great. Any questions for Mark?
I have one.
Marty?
So the extent where the residential parking, permit parking program, can we investigate extending that in some problematic areas? For, for instance, outside, or further east on the avenues, up along Linden, Poplar Elm, and over in Sunset, and on the north side of town? Just to get a feel on how tough is it to park in those neighborhoods right now? Because when I was canvassing, I heard that complaint numerous times.
Yeah, the, the intent here for this scope was to, to look at, the reason it's, it's going up to Walnut was to consider the, the train station area.
Sure.
And, you know, I know that there are, you know, people who choose not to pay in the parking lot, and they park out in the, in the neighborhood. So it would, it would definitely look at development and changes that are occurring within the Transit Corridors Area and how they impact the surrounding neighborhoods. So, you know, to that extent, I think it would, it would consider a residential or a neighborhood parking program. You know, I'm not sure if it could go out, how far it could go out, but we'll definitely take a look at, you know, what the extent of it could be with this budget.
With this budget, right?
Yeah.
And how we could explore possibly having to amend that budget, since it is, we're getting it 100% paid, but it's kind of like the economy of scale.
Yeah.
Where you're going to have these professionals that know about parking, that they could come by, and they're coming by one day during the week.
Yeah.
And one day on the weekend, so having them canvas another neighborhood seems like it wouldn't be that much of an additional cost for that work to be completed. And getting the input from the residents at these public meetings, I think, would benefit everybody that, in those neighborhoods.
Yeah, well, as we, you know, after we submit the application, and assuming that we're awarded the, the grant, and then we sit down with the contractor that we would be working with, you know, we'll refine and develop a scope of services, and I think at that point, David, we'll probably, you know, update you on where we are with it and get your feedback at that point, I think.
Okay. I think it's great that you guys are looking at that and, something that needs to be done, parking in downtown. I couldn't help but saying that it's, it's enough, well, it's, it's, the second, the first sentence in that par, second paragraph, there's sufficient parking available in the downtown area, that's, I might have a little bit of a disagreement on.
Well, you know, that's, I, I don't want to get too, too far into that, but previous parking studies have shown, generally, 85% occupancy is considered, you know, becoming a burden, and there has been no, of all parking in the area, there, there's been no survey that showed 85%, besides, above 85% besides on San Mateo Avenue itself.
And that last parking survey was conducted when?
There was done, one done for the Transit Corridors Plan, and it was probably about 2009.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think things have changed in almost seven years. There's a lot more cars on the street. But anyhow, it's great, thank you very much.
Any other questions or action on this item?
Introduce a resolution. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10C, adopt a resolution accepting the Olympic Pump Station and Force Main Project as complete, authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorders Office, and authorizing a release of the construction contract retention in the amount of $129,173.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. The topic in front of you tonight is regards to one of the sewer pump stations that was recently successfully completed. We typically don't bring the project step-ins to council for presentations, and it's usually under consent. However, this project was one of the council priority project, and, and we thought it would be a good opportunity at project step-ins to show some of the highlights about this project. The city has a total of six pump stations, which staff maintains and operates, and this project is the first sewer pump station improvement, which was rebuilt from the ground up. Staff is proud of the project, and it is, has tremendously improved the reliability of their operations and visual impacts to the neighborhood. The Olympic Pump Station is located at 2540 Olympic Drive, shown on the red square there, within the northwestern part of the city, near the city limits of South San Francisco. The pump station collects wastewater from about 417 residents within the vicinity, as shown in the shaded area there on the slide. And the scope of work for this project includes replacement of the pump station and force main, which is a pressurized, pressurized pipeline that moves wastewater by pumping. And the force main terminates, as you can see on the slide, at the, near the intersection of Oakmont and Evergreen Drive, then becomes a gravity flow from there on. So why was there a need to replace the facility? The original pump station in Force Main, they were built in 1961 and has never been replaced, and since 2005, the city has encountered sanitary sewer overflows and, and the pump station, at the pump station, and two breaks at the force main. And the pump station is old and in decrepit condition and require constant repair and maintenance by staff. And the original pump station design had a separate wet well and dry well chambers. The pumps were located in the dry well chambers below ground, and when maintenance or repairs required, staff needs to descend into the dry well chamber to access the pumps, and the depth of the dry well was approximately 20 feet deep. And the consent decree with baykeepers also required the city to replace or abandon the pump station by July 1st, 2018. And the new pump station enforcement having designed to eliminate the risk of future sanitary sewer overflows and to sewer overflows and to increase the safety for maintenance staff, instead of this wet well, dry well chamber configuration, staff proceeded with only a wet well chamber design and included submersible pumps, so which eliminated the need for maintenance staff to descend into the dry well to perform maintenance or, and repairs, which they were previously doing. In addition, each pump is designed to handle peak weather flows, meaning it can, is capable of handling normal flows, flows plus any, any additional infiltration inflows into the, the system. And redundant pump is installed to provide backup pumping capability in case the, the main pumps stops working. The pump station is also equipped with sewage grinder that prevents large solids from entering the wet well chamber, prolonging the lifespan of the pumps. And a new force main material was designed using high density polyethylene, or was otherwise known as HTPE, material which is jointless and non-metallic, and is resistant to joint inflection from ground movement and corrosion. In addition, the pump station was designed to be visually compatible with the neighborhood. So just kind of go through some of the pictures of the pump station and the work that happened. So this is a picture of the old pump station. It has a garage-type structure with the flat roof and a chain link fence that was around the structure. And then the wet well is just in the, in front of the, the garage structure and, and the driveway. Here's a picture of the, the dry well and the pumps that are below, at the bottom, and there are two pumps there. And there's pipes just coming from the, near the stairs, which is the gravity pipeline, and the force mains on the opposite side of the, the pumps. Here's the, the construction of the force main. And as mentioned already, this material is made out of HTPE. The, each section comes about, in about forty-foot lengths, and these joints are fused together using a fusion machine. And the advantage of, again, this doesn't have any rubber gasket joints and has the flexibility to move if there's any seismic activities. Slide shows the, the beginning process, the demolition of the, the building and the pump station structure. And this, you know, show, this picture shows the depth and size of the new wet well chamber. As you can see, excavation has, you know, already taken place, and then the shoring has been placed around the perimeter. There are unexpected groundwater intrusion that came in, as you can see there, and the new wet well is about twenty feet deep as well. And it's a picture that shows how staff and the contractor worked together to mitigate the groundwater intrusion at the bottom of the, the wet well. It's the picture showing the wet well, the forming of the wet well at the beginning stage. Here's a bunch of rebars for the wet well. There, there is quite a bit of rebars that was, that was used on this project, as you can see, so this is pretty extensive. The above-ground piping that shows the, the force main, there are two pipes coming from the ground, towards the back of the picture, that's the, that's connected to each pump, and then the force main. And there's a new flow meter that's, that's installed to be allowed, to allow the staff to measure the, the amount of flow that's going out of the facility. Here's the beginning of the, the building foundation. The wet well structure, as you can see, is sort of adjacent to concrete structure that's already been built. And the construction of the new building, going, it's a masonry structure that's going up there. So overall, the project was completed on the budget and on schedule. And the project is funded through the wastewater enterprise funds and paid from the sewer fees collected, you know, from the residents in our city. And the city allocated contingency budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and five change orders were issued for a total amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, which is less than a budgeted amount. The change orders were for the de-watering, for the groundwater intrusion, and some larger retaining wall and additional concrete, the paving and trench, trench work that needs to be done. And overall budget allocated for this project was three and a half million dollars, and staff completed the project with three point two million dollars and leaving about three hundred dollars in savings. In addition, to pump station, to the pump station, the roadway was resurfaced along the entire force main alignment as well. Overall, it was a successful project, and the city didn't get, you know, any emails and phone calls from people coming to the counters complaining about the noise or construction about the project, but in fact, staff received various compliments from surrounding neighbors. They actually liked, actually here, there's the new pump station. So they actually liked the color of the building, and then, and the style and the color, actually, you know, were impressed with the brick that was being used for accent. They also liked the porch lights, actually. That was one of the, many compliments that the residents came by and talked to Wing about, and asked where we, we actually purchased the porch lights, because they wanted to place it in their homes, too, so. So next month, staff anticipate bringing the council to award construction of a sewer pump station project, which is the Spyglass Pump Station and Force Main Replacement Project. And staff also has requested for proposals and, it's for design, you know, engineering firms for two other pump station projects, and those are Crestmore and Lumina Pump Stations. And the award for the design contract will be brought to council in August. So I'd like to also acknowledge Wing Wong, who's sitting here next to me, and who was a project manager on this project, and Dennis Bosch there as well, who's the Wastewater Services Manager. They're, both of have, have instrumental in, in overseeing the success of this project through the design and the construction phase. So this concludes my presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions for Jimmy?
For the chair?
Marty?
Um, in the design, did they, how many soil, soil borings did they take to determine where the ground, how the ground was down at that lower level of that wet well?
Vice Mayor Medina? The exact number of soil borings, I can tell you, but we did take soil borings at the site, but we did not go deep enough to locate, to see any evidence of groundwater. So this groundwater intrusion really came as a surprise to us, and at the, at the depth of twenty feet.
Okay. And was the street totally repaved? I, I was on both sides wherever the HTP line was installed?
Okay. The sewer main runs along Olympic Drive and then up Oakmont, and the section on Oakmont was slowly sealed after the open trench construction. The section on Olympic Drive is a completely milled and paved.
Excellent. Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Irene?
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate the, the pictures in particular and the presentation. I think it's important that we can, the council, we award these construction bids, and then after a while, we kind of forget what's going on and where all that money goes. I think it's important that the residents realize how much anything like this costs. You look at it, you go, three million dollars, but that's what it costs. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Or action on this item?
I'll introduce resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10D, receive an oral report on the city's progress and results regarding sanitary sewer maintenance and operation.
Mr. Mayor, while they're getting seated, I just wanted to follow up on the last item and let you know that we have a, another item coming forward on your next agenda that is a similarly interesting story about a water feature that, or a water facility that we have recently completed construction on. So we will plan to do a similar presentation for you. But I also wanted to let you know that those two projects, Water Tank Number Three, the Olympic Pump Station, and now the relatively long ago completed College Water Pump Station, have all been completed within the last several months, and we'll be asking you soon to identify a date when we can take a little tour around the city and dedicate those facilities that we're very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, you're on.
I'm on. Oh, thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of council, I'm very proud to be here tonight to present to you some of our enhancements, some of our improvements, and some of our success regarding our wastewater division, especially in light of the very positive comments and congratulations we received recently during a baykeep, baykeeper meeting that we had, I think, three weeks ago. I wanted to work with Dennis Bosch, who's here with me tonight, help share with you the many improvements, successful programs, and ongoing efforts we have in the wastewater division. And during tonight's presentation, Dennis, who's our Wastewater Services Manager, and I will be, he will begin by providing an overview of the operational changes and adjustments to our maintenance practices and provide some details about how these improvements have led to ongoing reduction in SSOs, and, and explain a little bit about our enhanced capability that we now have, that we've been building for, that he's been building, that they've been building over the past few years. I'll go through our SSOs by the numbers and provide a little bit of a historical perspective, discuss where we're at. We'll provide an update for our point-of-sale program that Dennis is in, in charge of and administers on a day-to-day basis. We'll also go through our sewer lateral warranty partnership, which, as you might know, many of our residents have received letters this week. We also have some handouts up at the counter, but we'll go through a little bit of the highlights of that program and provide some information for those who are watching tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to Dennis.
I'm gonna jump in here because I was gonna say something at the very beginning, and then Dennis will speak in just a moment. The City Council doubtless remembers that in 2009, we received a kind of a double whammy bad news from the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Bay Keepers Organization when we were put into the situation of needing to work towards settlement of a lawsuit with the Bay Keepers and an enforcement action by the regional board having to do with a somewhat bad history of our aged wastewater system, springing leaks and creating sanitary sewer overflows at a, at a rate that was, caught the notice of both the regional board and the Bay Keepers. The presentation tonight, as, as Jim just indicated, comes on the heels of a meeting with the Bay Keepers that, as he indicated, we had three weeks ago. We, part of our agreement with the Bay Keepers calls for an annual report to them, and we have complied with that requirement. That agreement was entered in 2010. So we've provided a number of annual reports, and we have stepped through a number of improvements that Dennis and Jim are going to talk about a little bit further tonight. But the meeting was unusually positive, surprisingly positive, in that the Bay Keepers not only expressed appreciation and congratulations for the good work that the city has done, but they also asked for our advice on a number of issues, that they would like to be able to take advantage of some of the things that we've done as providing information and education to some of their other, other people they work with, other, other people that they've sued, and as best practice. And so we were, of course, happy to share information with them and, and actually quite proud to be able to be recognized, not only as having complied with the letter of the agreement, but having made such good progress that we come onto their radar screen as a very capable and collaborative and good performing agency. So with that, Dennis is going to give you a little bit of an overview of the operations, and then the presentation will continue, and we'd be happy to take any of your questions when we finish.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. In, in tune with what Councilperson O'Connell said, I'm happy tonight to not necessarily show up and just ask for something for, for either some machinery and the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but in tune with what she said, this is, this is our way of saying what you've given us and what, what, what the money has done for us and for, and for you. So with that, I'll start with some operational changes and improvements. In reaction to the consent decree and cease and desist order, and in a constant effort to become better, our first operational change was the construction of our first-ever electronic sewer maps. Up to the, up to the point in 2011 and maybe a year beforehand, all we had was a paper map on a wall, and we would write things in as, either we uncovered things or we found things. What we did is, each, each mainline segment, once we created these maps, was given an identification number, and it was given a, a, a form of cleaning, whether it be hydrojetting, mechanical rotting, or chemical root foaming. Once we gave it a type of cleaning, we decided to, we sat down with myself and the crew and said, what do we know about these pipes? How often does this one segment that's bad need to be cleaned? Once we figured that out, we installed all this information into our maintenance management system. And once it was put in there, into that system, it was controlled on how often it would come up, and the system spits it out in a, in a work order system, saying, hey, this line segment is due to be cleaned. The positive effect of this is that we now have maps to help for long-range CIP planning. Staff has the ability to check where things are just to verify for upcoming projects. And each of our cleaning programs is now guaranteed to be carried out by the heartbeat of our system, and what I, what I refer to to describe it as, the CMMS brain clock. That same CMMS system that controls our cleaning programs also helps us to make cleaning cycle changes, stores response information from house calls, which leads to better customer service, and stores other historical system information for our crews so that they can be best armed with the most up-to-date info to make better decisions in the field. When a crew member comes along and they clean a line and they find something, they find a bad spot, let's say at fifteen feet, they write it in the work order, and next time it comes up, six months, a year later, three years, they said, hey, watch out, there's a bad spot at X amount of feet. In response to the newly adjusted cleaning programs, we made intelligent equipment purchases to support and deliver our programs. We replaced one hydrojetter truck with limited capabilities. You can see the picture behind us. The, the truck that we had could only clean a line, it couldn't extract the sewer debris from the sewer lines. So we turned that into a vector truck, and now we have two, as you can see, that can do maintenance and respond to SSOs and capture sewage. This, this right here was actually at a, a force main break on Crestwood Drive. Both vehicles worked through the night, and they lessen the amount of overall gallons spilled. Next slide. Here is another slide where we had an SSO up off of Rollingwood and Crestwood Drive. This is on the side of 280, where sewage had exited a manhole and came down on the side of the road, and our crews are coned off and, and capturing as much sewage as possible. Next slide. What we've also done is we've installed inline grinders before the wet wells and the pump stations. Director Tandon mentioned, as, as part of the Olympic Pump Station rebuild, we installed different machinery, and this was also in start as part of that, part of that build program. This grinder is put in line before a wet well to stop anything that could be flushed down a toilet that could get in and jam a sewage pump. Basically, it's a grinder. It grinds anything that you can imagine. We've seen two-by-fours, rugs, anything, pagers, cell phones, everything that could possibly fall into a toilet and eventually make it to our pump station. That, that grinder was brought before the council about four years ago for the Crestwood Pump Station. We were pulling up the pumps twice a week. Once we, once we installed that, we haven't had to, we haven't had a jam pump since. That was, from what I remember, in the area of sixty-two thousand dollars. Another thing that we bought is our emergency bypass pump. This was on, again, on Crestwood Drive during, from a rain event. The sewage was overflowing due to the amount of rainwater that got into the system. This pump was out here for three days straight. It stopped the SSO. And every gallon that we stopped from spilling is a gallon that we're not responsible or could be fined from the Water Quality Board and/or Bay Keepers. We've also used that to first-ever complete wet well maintenance where we can bypass a sewage station totally. We were never able to do that before. And again, before the Canes project that was completed, the Sewer Man on Canes, it was also out there for three days straight with staff, manning it twenty-four hours a day, stopping SSOs happening from the rain. Next slide. And then our last purchase, and I call it our lifesaver, is our CCTV truck. For the past, as long as the city's out of sewer system, we're flying blind. We now use this to verify videos that were done by the previous contractor. We're going in and we're using it as emergency situations in the sense of our crews either get stuck in a line with a hose, or they feel a bad spot. We send this truck out there immediately, we identify the bad spot, we call our contractor, it's repaired. In the old days, it would have possibly taken a week or so, and/or it could have possibly caused a blockage in a line and caused an SSO. So one other good thing about this is, not only are we using it for the wastewater division, but Ted Chapman, our, our Streets of Stormwater Manager, had an issue in a storm culvert, and we needed to find out what was going on. we needed to find out what was going on it and he got a bid for, I think approximately $50,000. We ran our truck out there, got it done in about six hours and there was no need to ask for $50,000, which is possibly, I think, from what I remember, one-sixth the buyback of the truck in one day. So I can't speak enough for it. Next slide. So we, from our CCTV truck and our program that runs it, this is a picture of a perfect pipe and we wanted to give you this as a reference point to what you're about to see. There's no roots, no cracks, there are no roots, no cracks, there is no sag in the line, there's no level of water, which means that it doesn't have the right slope. So in this slide, you can tell that it's obviously not like the other pipe. There's about a hole in the pipe about the size of about three footballs. It's got root intrusion, it's got a sag or a water line and basically it's already catching some debris. And if this isn't corrected expeditiously, it will cause a blockage and an SSO. And if you can see the date on that, the date on the bottom of that was the 25th of So this is a pipe that has more root intrusion and if you look at the top of the pipe, there's pieces that are cracked. Eventually, those pieces fall in because of the pressure of ground, static pressure outside the pipe, falls into the pipe and then debris catches it and again a blockage and then eventually an SSO. I was going to show you a picture of a pipe totally filled with roots, but then there's really hardly anything you can see, it just looks like a gray cobweb. So basically, here's a pipe that has medium root intrusion, it's about halfway to about maybe one-quarter of the pipe, but that's what we go in to either clean it out with high-pressure water, we put a mechanical saw, or we do chemical root treatment. Those are the programs that I mentioned before. So other than those programs, we have also implemented other technology to help guarantee proper system operation. We purchased and deployed nine smart meters to remote monitor previous SSO locations and what a smart meter is, is basically it's an electronic sending unit, it's like a cellular device. It's attached underneath the manhole lid, it shoots a recognition beam at the level of sewage or the flow in the manhole and the idea is that if there's a blockage, then the water can't get by it and it starts to raise. We have parameters set so that basically if the water gets up, we have the parameters set so that basically it goes to our pagers and our smartphones and we can get the crew out there and we can get that line cleared before it actually creates an SSO. So we have nine of those in the system and they're being monitored 24 hours a day. Along those lines, we've also installed SCADA, which is Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition. It's just another system, pre-warning system, that is basically like the smart meters but for the sewer pump stations that monitor the wet well levels, the pumps turning on and off so that if there's any kind of mechanical failure, it again gives us a pre-heads-up so that we can get staff out there, again, it's 24 hours monitoring so that we can keep any problem from a sewer station happening. The sewer stations are really important because though you may have one main that can contribute to an amount of gallonage, you have several mains or several tributaries go into a pump station. So if a pump station goes down, it's going to be a really bad day. And then the last big change over the years, spot repairs. Over the last years, we went from repairing approximately 10 repairs a year in 2005 to now approximately 100 or more a year. In 2005, our contract repair line item was $30,000. Now it's $900,000. We're repairing portions of our sewer system at a rapid rate. Our proposed budget allows us to keep on pace for the next year, keep that pace for the next year, excuse me. I've been leading this division since 2006. We used to have one to two SSOs a week. We have never made it this far into a year with zero SSOs. The hard work and dedication of our staff, along with the changes and improvements I have just described, have all led to this tremendous success. Jim's going to talk a little bit more about SSOs.
Thank you, Dennis. I have to tell you that the improvements that Dennis went through pretty quickly, and if you know Dennis, that was quickly. Wouldn't be possible without the support, not only of the council, and I know that for many years, I haven't been here that many years, but for many years, you guys have struggled with the decisions and the programs that needed to take place and that was always a tough battle. But not only support from council, but from the city manager's office and support from our great wastewater team. I believe that one of the major reasons why the wastewater division has achieved the level of success that it has is that it takes a very strong leader, someone who is passionate and energetic, who's willing to actually lead and drive the changes necessary. It's one thing to come up in a meeting and come up with ideas about what we can do, it takes something else to lead a crew, especially if a crew's been sort of ingrained with some of the practices over the years. I can't say enough about what it took for the organization to make that change, not only with the funding necessary to do it, but with the leadership. And I'm very proud of Dennis and I'm very proud of the crew and I want you to know that, that they do a very good job every single day. It takes someone that can apply that passion, energy to take on the new technology, the new equipment, challenge those old practices and work with our crews, like I said, to make reasonable adjustments that empower others to be successful. And that I can't say enough about what's occurred. One of the biggest improvements, again, is the culture that has changed. Tonight, we had planned on having two crew members here, Phil Wolfenden, who's our lead worker, and Scott McKenzie, who does quite a bit of work out in the field, not only with sewer laterals, but also a wide range of things. And in talking to both of them, I know that Scott had told me for years, when I first got here, he said, "You know, for years, we would drive around and just dump water down manholes because that's all we knew how to do. We didn't have the right equipment, we had to get things flowing." And with the combination of the CIP improvements that Jimmy Tan talked a little bit about, one pump station, but CIP improvements and the adjustments to the operation and the addition to equipment and some of the spot repairs that Dennis briefly spoke of, has allowed the crew to be more proactive, to sort of adjust as they go and they learn more, they can educate themselves and they're really excited about it and the numbers prove that out. Moving away from the reactionary practices of old to a more sustainable, efficient, proactive way to do business is not an easy transition, but like I said, one that Dennis and the crew have worked very hard to do. As Dennis explained, the many advancements have led to reductions in SSOs and I'll talk a little bit about those. Looking at the numbers, in particular, if I can make this come up, in particular, in the year 2010, 2011, you can see there's quite a significant change from 36 SSOs down to 15. That was when many of the maintenance practices began to sort of kick in and take place, when that proactive approach began to be more ingrained in the team, along with those improvements in the CIP and maintenance practices. It wasn't one thing, it was a combination of many things happening all at the same Lost my way here. Recently, with our aggressive spot repair and now with the CCTV, we have thus far been able to keep our SSOs down to a small number, that small number being zero. And as the city manager mentioned, the baykeeper was not only impressed with that, but it hasn't been my experience that you sit in a room with five attorneys and they're complimentary and they congratulate the city. It wasn't what I was expecting and I don't know if Dennis has calmed down since then, but out of that has come not only a lot of pride, but also a lot of recognition in what we're doing is working and other people are noticing and that's exciting for us. So I wanted to show you the SSOs as overlaid with our consent decree requirements. So in the red, those are our SSO limits. And again, SSOs are sanitary sewer overflows, that's sewage going outside the system to places we don't want it to, just so people know. So I wanted to show you that because we're at zero, our limit is eight. We never know, Dennis knocks on wood every day and crosses himself, but we never know when we're going to have an SSO, but one of the questions was, "Well, your SSO's low because we had a drought." And I would say yes and no. We had less of an opportunity for infiltration into our system, but we also had some really big storm events, as you know, and we weathered those storms fairly well. The early warning systems, as Dennis described, our SCADA system and our smart covers gave us the warnings that we needed, we were able to get out and make some adjustments. We've also encountered a lot of root problems, Dennis will talk about those, related to the drought, we think other agencies are having them as well, the roots are going deeper and getting to laterals and into the mains. But I wanted to show you those requirements to show you where we are at with that. One of the ways we've been able to keep improving our practices and being efficient is to look for new methods, new products, and new technology that will help do our job better, more efficiently and so forth. And so I wanted to share with you for a couple of minutes, an award that the city of San Bruno, in particular, the wastewater division, received from the U.S. Green Building Council. This award recognizes the wastewater division's use of an innovative and environmentally safe product to keep our pump stations and wet wells in good operating order. If I can get this to work. Maybe Dennis can fill a little time here while I make this thing work. Never mind, never mind, Dennis.
The BioAm is an automated biological delivery system. What that means is it produces bacteria that are able to consume fats, oils, and grease in wastewater. How it works is the BioAm starts with a dry culture of 32 grams of bacteria, the three main things that bacteria truly need, which are food, air, and water. When we provide those nutrients to them, they're able to grow and thrive and become alive. The BioAm produces these bacteria and mixes them over a 24-hour period and then automatically doses them into a wastewater system. After a 24-hour period of growth, you get to about 30 trillion bacteria. It is incredible in the amount of fat soils and grease that this bacteria can digest and then in turn turn them into CO2 and water. And these bacteria are incredibly great because they're renewable. Bacteria aren't going anywhere. They've been around for millions of years, when all of us are gone, they'll still be around. So the bacteria provide us with a green or sustainable approach to help remove one of the larger problems these cities are facing. This machine operates automatically, doesn't need someone to go press a go or any hands-on maintenance required from any of the staff, it's truly a hands-free piece of equipment. It will reduce the need and sometimes eliminate the need to have these large pumper trucks come and evacuate or suck out all of the contents of these lift stations. Generally, that needs to occur on a frequent basis based upon the amount of grease that builds up in there. If we can reduce the amount of grease that builds up in there, we can reduce the amount of routine maintenance that needs to occur. The United States Green Building Council is an organization that's made up of environmentalists, builders, nonprofit organizations, that all share the same interest in creating a sustainable community going forward.
And what happens is the U.S. Green Building Council, they look at all these green products and technology and they first of all see which of these green products work, first of all. And then they then decide, okay, what are the byproducts of these green products and technology? So the city of San Bruno is receiving this award because the BioAm is proprietary and a patented technology for wastewater applications. Therefore, all of our clients, like the city of San Bruno, are recognized for their sustainability achievement for use of the BioAm. And what this means is that the city of San Bruno should be very proud that they've addressed several factors that are important to the U.S. Green Building Council, one of them being workplace hazard reduction. And what this is, is that instead of using traditional products in the lift station like acids, caustics, solvents, which can be very harmful to city employees in contact with it, we're using the BioAm, which has naturally occurring bacteria, therefore eliminating the potential risk of any employees being in contact with the traditional products. And then another factor that the city of San Bruno has addressed is reducing their waste stream. And the BioAm has done this by providing a product that comes in a container about this size that's recyclable and one dosing of the BioAm is equivalent to five 55-gallon drums of liquid product every single day. So instead of shipping drums and drums of chemicals and storing them in the yard or at the lift station, we are reducing our carbon footprint by using the BioAm instead.
Thank you for your patience on that. In a nutshell, we don't have to clean the pump station as often, people don't have to go in where it's not so hospitable and do the kind of work that you can imagine they don't want to do. And again, it's sustainable and it's, who would have thought that the wastewater division would be in a position to have a green sort of label attached to it? It's sort of counterintuitive. So kind of moving on through our presentation, the point-of-sale program, I wanted to remind the council that that's been going on since May 8th last year. It was part of the baykeeper consent decree, it was approved in January of '14 and again, it went into effect May 8th. Dennis is going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing and the results of our inspections so far.
So to date, as you can see, we're up to 235 inspections, 176 have failed, 75% failure rate. And most realtors and citizens understand the process. Feedbacks, feedback from realtors regarding the process has been overwhelmingly good. It wasn't something that they weren't used to and other towns had implemented it for years before us. So once they knew that we were doing it, they said, "Everybody does it a little bit different, but you guys are pretty much on par with everybody else." So they understood. The one thing that really came out of the point-of-sale program that we didn't really identify at first is these repairs that are being done on the private side and out underneath the sidewalk and street, they're helping to lower our SSO numbers. Many times, we would find, and this is the only way I can describe it, root masses in a six-inch main, you can tell the characteristics of it. Four-inch pipes come from houses. When you get a root mass out of a four-inch pipe, it's a lot smaller. A lot of times, and in fact, the last three months, we found two mains surcharged or backed up per se, not overflowing, but once we cleaned them, we found out that they were root masses pushed down the line from plumbers. So all of these 176 pipes that have been repaired, whether they're due to be roots or pieces of pipe, you know, structural failures, are occurrences that could have produced and have produced objects getting into our system that then would cause our system to fail and then we would have an SSO. So in a sense, not only is it helping for, you know, not getting groundwater in, it's keeping the roots from getting into our system. So overall, it's been a very good thing.
And to add to that, when we met with the baykeeper, one of the discussions we had was our Sharp Park SEP program, which we've been to the council before and discussed. It hasn't been very successful, even though we've done some outreach to the public, we've had limited results. And in our discussions with the baykeeper, we've talked about the point-of-sale program and because we've got clear evidence that there are issues associated with laterals that are more than 50 years old, because we've got a program that's here a little more than a year old, they've agreed or suggested that they would, on our behalf, lobby, for my word, not theirs, the water board for an adjustment for the Sharp Park program to perhaps go citywide with our Sharp Park program, our lateral grant program that we have that's not very successful in Sharp Park, but using this as a guide, maybe take that citywide and adjust the program. So staff's been in conversations with not only the water board, but the baykeeper to set up a meeting and been working on some adjustments in language for that program. And while we're optimistic, we're sort of conservatively optimistic, let's say. So the point-of-sale program, as Dennis said, brought some, I think, over time, it's making some improvements with root removal, but also it might spawn our savings for the Sharp Park program, so stay tuned for more of that. And then finally, I wanted to just talk a little bit about our sewer lateral warranty program partnership with service line warranties. Letters went out this week. I have fielded almost 20 calls myself and I know that utility billing, city manager's office, engineering, and others have also talked to folks. And overwhelmingly positive response, mostly it's, "Is this real? Is this a scam?" is one of the frequent questions. The other questions are just, you know, "How does it work? What is it?" The other questions are just, you know, how does it work, what is the program, and we've got frequently asked questions in the back. We've also forwarded people the phone numbers if they didn't have it already, encouraged them to talk to the company directly. So, that's moving forward, and so far, we've got some pretty good, I think, over 60 or 70 phone calls, near as I can count. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Any questions for Jim and the team? This is, you should all be complimented. I know, you know, you talked about us struggling with the financial end of it too, and we made the decision, but the fact that the money's out there, it's got to be used properly, and you certainly have done that. It's a big drop in SSOs, a drop, I mean, to zero, how much more can you go? So it's a wonderful program, and it really is a compliment to everyone, you know, in the infrastructure end of all of this, to what you've done has been extraordinary, you know. So I want to congratulate you and all of the staff and members of the different divisions that are involved in this, please pass that on. Anyone else? Irene?
Oh, thank you. I was looking at the budget, and I didn't notice, did you need any more grinders? If they do that great a job and keep our people out from having to fix things like, as you said earlier, should we put some more out there?
I think the council's been very supportive, as I've said, and Jimmy Tan, our Public Services Director, not only has plans in place, but he listens to Dennis. He seems mild and quiet here, but believe me when I tell you that not only does Jimmy solicit comments and incorporates those, but it's a really team effort. So, the newly designed pump stations are clearly a collaborative effort, and Olympic Pump Station's an example of that.
So you don't need any new grinders?
Well, no, they're now designed into the pump stations.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Great. To the chair, go ahead, Marty.
Great job. A few questions. For the video truck, I think you just recently got it, since when? Just curious.
We received it New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, nice. So you're required to video pretty much the majority of the city by baykeeper's decree or agreement?
We are required to revisit or video every line segment or every pipe once every five years.
Okay. And where do you think, what's your production rate? Is that video truck being utilized every single day?
Approximately four days a week.
Four days a week, and approximately how many feet per day are you getting?
It just depends on if we run into a problem, but what we are on, we're about between 14 and 18 line segments a week.
Okay. So those questions are, as we go into our budget study session after this meeting, of finding out, are we on target? Do we need to, you know, press on the gas to do more of the video, being that there's approximately 18 miles of sewer main in San Bruno?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, okay. What, one of the next steps within the CMMS is basically, we're going to install, much like the cleaning programs, we're going to install the revisiting or recleaning, or actually, in this case, the re-inspection. So we're, I'm currently working on that right now, so that, like I said, every line segment we put on a reoccurring basis, so it's just going to keep going.
Okay.
Almost forever.
For the spot repairs of $100, almost $900,000, is that subcontracted out, or is that work done by our staff?
That's mostly contracted out. Yeah.
And approximately how much money has this Bio-Amp saved? I mean, what do you think? I mean, how expensive is that bacteria? I mean, where is...
The bacteria is $386 a month, and I would say that depending on, it's an equational issue in the sense of how often the grease gets formed in that one station, we only have it in one station.
Okay.
And we're monitoring Olympic to see whether it'd be beneficial or not, but when you put in two staff members in a truck for, let's say, maybe an hour, you know, and depending on, if in the winter months, it churns up, so it may be necessarily at the station, it has its benefit, but there's also the residual effect. I mean, once the bacteria gets in the pump station, and once it's pumped, it goes down the rest of the system, and it keeps eating all of the bad stuff. So whether it be in the station, or whether it be in the collection system downstream, we're seeing a benefit to it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Well, this is just an oral report, there's no action. We want to thank you very much, and once again, congratulations on a job well done. Item 11, reported commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't any this evening, comments from council members. I neglected to welcome Greg Rubens, who is filling in for our city attorney, happens to be on vacation. Welcome back, Greg. Closed session, we don't have a closed session this evening.
To the chair. Did have something? I'm sorry. No problem. Real quick, I just wanted to say that I attended Cappuccino's Class of 2016 graduation on May 27th, and was asked to speak at Parkside's eighth grade graduation last Thursday. And I guess, just as you're adjourning, congratulations to all of our residents and to the Class of 2016. We wish them the best as they embark upon their new journey and new chapter in their life.
Great. Anyone else? Irene?
I just want to remind people that we will be having a Florida Park Construction Planning Meeting on Wednesday, June 22nd, at 6:30 at the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center, which is a lot of old things, on 458 San Mateo Avenue. So we hope to see people there. You should have received an invitation that looks like this in your mail, and if you did, we hope to see you there.
Study session, we're going to go into a study session to continue our discussion of the review, a review of the proposed 2016-17 Operating Capital Improvement Program budgets. And prior to adjournment, I would like to close this council meeting in memory of a couple of entities here. First of all, in Orlando, Florida, there was a horrible, horrible mass murder is what it was. It touches us all, and we know what it's like as a city to have a tragedy, all those horrors, ours is entirely different. So, watching all the news reports, it brought me back to some of the things that we had been through, and some of the discussions that the police, the fire, the victims had discussed there. So, I just feel very, very bad for everyone there, and we wish them their prayer, keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Also, we lost a week or so ago, a member of the community who was very involved, his name was Skip Henderson. And Skip Henderson was a member of the San Bruno Park School Board, he passed away on May 29th. He served in the United States Navy, was a devoted member of the Order of the Masons, Mission Number 169. He was also a skilled writer and a poet, and over his 31 years of service to the San Bruno community on the San Bruno Park School District Board of Trustees, Skip said, and he wrote his own eulogy, that he always did his best and was honored to serve his community. So, in memory of the 49 that perished, and also Skip Henderson, I'd like a moment of Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned until the next council meeting, right here in June 28th.